Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
Council meeting of July 9, 2012, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Here.
Mr. Starker?
Present.
Mrs. Jay?
Here.
Mr. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Pond?
Present.
Mr. Demott?
Here.
Mrs. Langworthy? And, uh, Ms. Davis informed me that she would be absent tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 5, 2012?
So move second.
If a motion for approval was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt and Mr. Stites, please poll the council on the minutes.
Mrs. Langworthy, I think you pushed the wrong... All right, please revote. We're clear. Okay, motion carries six, six to nothing with Mrs. Langworthy abstaining.
Uh, thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item, not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will get a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have thirty seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward and form a line at the public comment on the podium, and please spell your last name for the record for public comment.
Oh, you can just start speaking. Does everybody sign the thing? Okay.
Now, please spell your last name for the record and give us your city and your address.
It's located by the Altar Street.
Now, please spell your last name for the record.
G.I.R.S.O.N.
Thank you.
Um, the gentleman over here thought I was having difficulty with my oxygen machine, and he kindly offered to help me. People kindly offer to help me quite often when they see me in this getup because they recognize that, um, that I'm less than a whole person in my breathing and, uh, expectations. It's very nice, but it feels terrible to have to have that. I was a police officer for two different jurisdictions. I, um, was a swimmer, competitive swimmer as a child, but I had something that I didn't even know mattered, and that was parents that smoked. And when I married another police officer, I married someone who also smoked. And at that time, most people did. You didn't realize how bad it stunk. It was, uh, just something that everybody did, so all the kids came in to school in the mornings smelling a little funky, and that was okay. But it's really not okay. I never smoked a day in my life. And yet today, if I go into a, um, hospital or a doctor's office, there's always at least one person who assumes that I earned this COPD by smoking, doing something bad to myself. It wasn't necessary to do anything bad to myself. All I needed to do was breathe the air. That's all. Just breathe the air. I've passed down some genetic material to my grandsons for asthma. My father was asthmatic. The doctor, when he was ten years old, suggested to his parents that they allow him to smoke because it will help him inhale more deeply. It was actually seen as being good for you then. So along with this propensity for asthma, uh, they have the propensity to, uh, for serious reactions from all sorts of, of different ways. I have never been hospitalized, um, overnight for my attacks.
Hi, excuse me, that's three minutes, unless you have somebody here signed up with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address.
Um, R-U-S-S-O.
Well, what's your first name and last name, and then spell your last name, please?
Uh, Nathan, and then Russo, R-U-S-S-O.
Thank you.
And 5577 Quail Street, Arvada, Colorado.
Thank you. Don't be nervous.
Um, I go to Everett Middle School, and I sometimes ride the bus, and people, I can see kids that are particularly younger than me that do smoke. And my mom and my grandma always tell me about how it can affect me, and 'cause I play football, how it can affect all the activities that I do, how it makes them bad. Me and myself, I play a lot of sports, and it could affect me very badly when I play those sports. And it can just also affect me while I'm at home because I, like my grandma said, I can breathe it in at school when I ride the bus home, and it can affect my asthma that way. And the past, I think last year it was, I went to Children's Hospital, and I stayed there for about three or four days because of the smoke that I had inhaled in other places, but also at my school, at the bus stop. I'm done.
Thank you.
Um, Kimberly Russo, R-U-S-S-O, and my address is 5577 Quail Street, Arvada, Colorado, 8002. And I am speaking, um, for myself and my sons, three of which do have asthma, including my mother. I do not personally have asthma, but I can tell you that when I've been at the bus stop at Wheat Ridge High School, uh, across the street on Thirty-Second Avenue, just on the south side, and the one on West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, uh, just east of Kipling, that I do cough after a while because I can smell the smoke. If people are smoking while I'm there, then, uh, it affects me even worse. With the Breathe Easy Coalition, uh, and Jefferson County Health Department in coordination with Lutheran Medical Center, Everett PTA, and Wheat Ridge High School PTSA, we put together what we call butt pickup. Many of the kids were involved from both schools, totally ninety, ninety people. And, um, we picked up approximately fourteen pounds worth of cigarette butts at just those two bus stops alone and into the entrance of Crown Hill. Uh, I can tell you that it was very difficult for my son and I to breathe at that time because of it being on our hands, and, uh, even though we had gloves to pick it up, it stayed in our clothing until we got home. I would like to see a no-smoking ordinance in those areas, just as Lakewood and Arvada and Golden have, um, got on board, um, for putting those ordinances in place. Guess that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Grant Wicklund. It's W-I-C-K-L-U-N-D, and I'm the president and CEO of Lutheran Medical Center here in Wheat Ridge. I have two, uh, sort of a twofold purpose tonight. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the city of Wheat Ridge and Mayor DeTulio for sponsoring the Leaves of Hope Kids Dash during our National Cancer Survivors Day at the hospital a few weeks ago. Uh, the kids were really thrilled to have their own race. It was funny to watch them, and we really appreciated the support of the city and all of the people that showed up. Secondly, as a leader in healthcare in the community, Exempla Lutheran Medical Center is committed to supporting tobacco-free environments in our community. In 2008, as you probably know, we adopted a strong tobacco-free campus-wide policy, and this earlier this year, we supported the city of Lakewood in adopting stronger laws, and we, we take it seriously on our campus. Uh, as a hospital CEO, I get to see firsthand, sadly, the detrimental effects that tobacco has on our population, uh, and not just to the people who are, uh, chronic users of tobacco, uh, but also the people who have acute respiratory sensitivities such as asthma and COPD, who are very negatively affected, and sometimes it by, to the point that they have to attend the emergency department because of their exposure to secondhand smoke. So it's not only a choice people make, uh, it's a, a choice people are subjected to as a matter of course. So, uh, this is, this is a nationwide trend. Uh, there is no question but tobacco, but that tobacco causes COPD, lung cancer, and emphysema, and in fact, the chances, although we all have an Aunt Sadie who lived to be ninety-seven and smoked every day of her life, the fact is that your chances of acquiring one of these respiratory diseases are up to fifteen times as great with tobacco use or exposed to secondhand smoke. So I would encourage the, the, uh, the community and the, the city council to consider passing stronger, uh, tobacco-free laws. Uh, I've seen that happen and seen them have no negative effect on business at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Carol Salzman, S-A-L-Z-M-A-N-N, uh, 8300 West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, uh, representing Exempla Lutheran this evening. And I want to echo, uh, Grant's comments about Leaves of Hope. We do truly appreciate that the city of Wheat Ridge, Patrick, thank you, and Mayor DeTulio for sponsoring the Kids Dash. We had eleven kids race in just that dash, and if you want to go out and look at the photos on www.leesofhopeallone.org, uh, it's fabulous to see the thrill that the cancer survivors got from being participants in that event and, and really seeing the community come together. I wanted to also extend a thank you to not only the Communications Department, but Planning and Police and Administrative Department for helping us support that event. The participants, five hundred and four runners raced through Wheat Ridge and really made some great comments about our city, uh, and we should be very proud of that. I also wanted to make a few comments about tobacco. What Grant said is true. We as hospital leaders have been committed to tobacco-free environments for our patients. Uh, since 2008, we were one of the leading Colorado hospitals to adopt a, a campus that's tobacco-free. Um, we still have challenges, but we're always committed to rising to those challenges. Uh, we've worked closely with the Jefferson County Department of Health, who've helped us implement, uh, sensation classes for our associates and for the public, and we'll continue to partnership with them. We serve on their leadership committee and also are very connected with the Breathe Easy Wheat Ridge Collaborative. So as you look forward to the fall and, uh, really taking a leadership role in looking at tobacco in this community, I challenge you to, um, look at what other communities are doing and be a leader along with Lutheran in making sure that kids in our community, particularly in parks and playgrounds, will have safe places to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Tara Jahn, J-A-H-N, and I'm at, uh, 3620 High Court, Wheat Ridge. And, um, I'm sure you all know why I'm here, is to shamelessly promote some upcoming events that we hope you will attend. But I also wanted to preface that, um, that advertisement with, I'm sure that you've all had the opportunity to go down to, um, Main Street and, and see all the improvements. But again, as a, as a community member, it's, I think that you all probably need to be reminded, and if you are not familiar with what's going on, um, there's been a lot of changes on Thirty-Second Avenue in the past months since, I think I was here last time. They have the new planters, the new patios out in two of our restaurants. And Friday I was there with, um, I didn't actually mean to meet people there, but it was funny because once you start seeing people out, there's a lot of people that you see over and over again, and it's just creates that sense of community. But when you're down at Right Coast Pizza, it's, it's a turning point in this community. I feel like there's a lot of people out, there's just an energy that's drawing people into this area. I had a couple of friends who came from Denver, um, just to check out the new patio. So I just want to say thank you for, again, continuing to make those improvements, and I'm really excited for the greenery that's about to be put into those, those patios and boxes along the corridor. So the, the upcoming events, we have, um, our first-ever family yoga in the park coming up on Thursday. We, um, are going to be at the Wheat Ridge Five Eight Campus, and we're going to do it in conjunction with the Live Local Dines Event. So I know I've seen a lot of your faces before at the monthly dines events, and so thank you for continuing to come. And this time, we're trying to be able to offer some fun family activities. We're gonna do it right across the street, so you can come get dinner, do an activity, or do it vice versa. And then, um, so that's Thursday from, uh, 6:30 to 7:30, but the dines event is going to be at Right Coast, and they're doing a really great, um, food deal to try some of their pizzas, and that'll be, um, from 5 to 8 is the food event. So the Cruiser Crawl is the next one. We had fifty-plus participants come to the First Bike Cruiser Crawl. It was amazing, and it was unforeseen, so this, we're doing another one, and we're naming, we're, uh, theming it after the nineties because I thought it'd be fun to dress up. And so we will be, uh, Thursday, July 19th. Uh, that's gonna be starting at Panorama Park at 6:30. So I brought some flyers. I'm gonna pass those to Ms. Janelle. Please circulate, invite your friends, and if you want to post on Facebook and tell everyone about our fun events. And our next, um, Live Local Dines is at Pietra's, so that'll be fun, but thank you very much.
That wasn't too shameless. That wasn't too shameless. Thank you. Do you have anybody else who'd like to speak on a public comment before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? I don't think so. I'll move on to consent agenda, item number one, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have three items tonight under consent agenda. A motion to approve payment to Gordon Sign in Denver in the amount of sixty-one thousand three, three hundred and five dollars for the construction and installation of park signs, resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve, amending the fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars from the two thousand nine Justice Assistance Grant, and a motion to approve the payment to the portable commut ion computer systems in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents for scheduled annual replacement of ten Panasonic mobile data computers. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve payment of Gordon Sign, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred and five dollars for the construction and installation of park signs. I also move to approve resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand and twelve, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and twelve general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars from the two thousand nine Justice Assistance Grant. And finally, I move to approve payment to portable computer systems in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the scheduled annual replacement of ten Panasonic mobile data computers.
Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
You have a second by William Butt-Starker. Any changes to items A, B, or C? Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to zero with...
Why are you...
That's not right.
Please revote again.
Okay.
It's green or red?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item two is council bill number eleven dash two thousand and twelve. I'm gonna open the public hearing, Councilmember Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number eleven dash two thousand and twelve, an ordinance amending the city Wheat, the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter twenty-two, Sections twenty-two sixty-seven and twenty-two sixty-eight A, to clarify those entities which are exempt from use tax on building materials and supplies. City Code, Section twenty-two sixty-six imposes a city use tax on certain transactions or use in the city. Section twenty-two sixty-seven exempts certain items from city use tax. Section twenty-two sixty-seven, two, contains such an exemption for transactions involving tangible personal property, which would be exempt from the city's sales tax. However, it also contains an exemption to the stated exemption for use tax on building materials and supplies. This section has caused much confusion through the years and does not comport with staff's policy concerning the administration of this section. This ordinance amends the code to resolve these problems.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This is ordinance number fifteen, twelve.
Uh, thank you. Is there any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Uh, just real briefly, um, just to add to that, uh, the reason we're asking for this change is, is that contractors, um, typically pass, um, the use tax cost on to the customer, and many times as a line item charge, and the city and quasi-city agencies and public schools, um, would bear a higher cost of the projects if the tax is charged. And there's also the appearance that the city is, is taxing itself and also the schools. So as a matter of practicality, um, we just ask that we amend the code so that, um, uh, it is more efficient and better serviced to our energy, our industry, and to align the law with the policy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number two? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion. Any questions on item two or comments? Mr. Starker? I'm gonna close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number eleven dash two thousand and twelve, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws, Chapter twenty-two, Sections twenty-two sixty-seven and twenty-two sixty-eight A, to clarify those entities which are exempt from use tax on building materials and supplies on second reading, and let it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, was seconded by Councilmember Langworthy, discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
It's too much heat and humidity, I think. Item number three is council bill number oh-seven dash two thousand and twelve. I'm gonna open the public hearing, Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number oh-seven dash twenty-twelve, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at Fifty-Sixty Ward Road from Planned Industrial Development, PID, and Light Industrial, to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development zone district, case number WZ-12-02 IBC Holdings. In September of 2010, city council adopted new mixed-use zone districts which are intended to create a streamlined development review process, allowing higher density, mixed-use development, and with a range of land uses, including residential. The applicant requests approval of a zone change from Planned Industrial Development and Light Industrial to mixed-use commercial TOD for property located at Fifty-Sixty Ward Road. The zone change is a first step of the process for approval for redevelopment of this site with mixed-use zoning. Pursuant to the mixed-use zone districts, sites over ten acres in size must complete a concept plan. The concept plan, which is approved administratively, is a general plan for development that designates proposed circulation concepts, proposed building paths, and preliminary land use concepts. A neighborhood meeting would be required prior to application for the concept plan approval process. If approved, and prior to construction of any new structures, a site development plan will be required, meeting the standards in the mixed-use zone.
Uh, thank you. Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This is ordinance number fifteen, thirteen.
Uh, thank you. If you're here to speak tonight on item three, please stand and raise your right hand for, I swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Move on to staff presentation.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development, case number WZ-12-02 is a request for approval of a zone change from Planned Industrial Development and Light Industrial to Mixed Use Commercial TOD. Fifty-Sixty Ward Road is the location of the property. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan zoning ordinance, case file impact materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear this case this evening. So this is a twenty-ten aerial of the property. You can see it's outlined in red with Fiftieth Place running along the south side, Ward Road along the west, and Fifty-Second Avenue up at the top. There are actually two zonings on the property that we're considering, um, for rezoning. Uh, the bottom one, which is the lighter color, is zoned Planned Industrial Development. This was the prior home to the Jolly Rancher Candy Manufacturing Plant until about 2002. Um, it's, uh, ten point four acres, and it's got a few miscellaneous structures still on it. Um, in the middle of the property, you can see this twenty thousand square foot, uh, building that was used for manufacturing and warehouse, and then a couple miscellaneous structures further to the east. The north portion, which, uh, abuts up to Fifty-Second Avenue, is zoned Light Industrial. It's about four acres and is currently vacant. Um, there is a variety of, uh, land uses and zoning surrounding the property. Immediately to the east is a parcel zone Light I, that is currently RV storage, um, RV and boat storage. Further to the east is a residentially zoned Alpaca Farm, and beyond that, a residential neighborhood zoned R2. To the north and south are industrial zoned properties, and then on the, uh, to the west across Ward Road is unincorporated Jefferson County, both to the west, then also to the northwest. And to the north is, uh, the city of Arvada on the north side of Fifty-Second Avenue. So just to move quickly through some slides, um, this, uh, image is taken looking east along Fiftieth Place, and you can see the, that twenty thousand square foot, um, uh, industrial building on the property. See, looking to the north, um, from Fiftieth Place, you can see the RV storage off to the right-hand side, and then some of the industrial buildings along Fifty-Second. North, looking north onward, the, uh, the property is off on the right-hand side of the image. This is looking east on Fifty-Second Avenue, and then looking south from Fifty-Second and Vivian towards the property. Um, in 2005, the property owner submitted a request for a zone change from PID and I to PMUD or Planned Mixed Use District. The intent of the application was to allow for the development of office warehouse, uh, flex space in the first phase, and then, uh, the intent of the subsequent phase, subsequent phases wasn't defined at that moment, but it would have allowed, um, general commercial, industrial, and some residential uses. Uh, the zone change was ultimately denied by city council on, uh, November fourteenth, two thousand and five. Um, since that zone change application was denied, there have been, um, many actions that have impacted, uh, the existing property and the future use of it. Later in 2005, the city adopted the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy as a policy document. Part of that document recommended that the city target certain areas for redevelopment through sub-area planning. So in 2006, we went through the northwest sub-area, uh, planning process and have that as an addendum to the comp plan. In RTD, or in 2007, RTD began the EIS process and site plans, planning for the transit stop on the Gold Line, that would be the end-of-line stop that's in the city of Wheat Ridge. Two thousand and nine, uh, the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan was adopted. Later that year, we had envisioned Wheat Ridge, which is the city council, or the city comprehensive plan was adopted. And then finally, in November of 2009, there was a ballot initiative approved which removed the charter height and density restrictions for most of our urban renewal areas. Finally, in 2010, city council adopted the new mixed-use zoning districts. As you're aware, um, the mixed-use zoning districts, um, there are four. Mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development, or TOD, is one of... Mixed-use Commercial Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, is one of those designations, and that is the request tonight. It's designated for areas within a half-mile of light rail stations, and it permits a wide range of uses to allow densities that would support transit ridership, and again would allow a mix of commercial, retail, and multifamily residential uses. As Mrs. Langworthy was reading the council action form, I talked a little bit about process in that. The zone change application that we're looking at tonight is the first step in redevelopment of this area. If that is approved, then we move on to a concept plan, which is an administrative approval, and it shows the general layout of the property. There's a neighborhood meeting required. We would also start looking at some of the development concepts, traffic, and circulation patterns, and that kind of thing. Once that's approved, we move on to finer detail, the site development plan, again administratively approved, and then subdivision plat if needed, and of course, building permit before any sort of new construction. This is an excerpt from the Northwest Area Sub-Area Plan. This is the preferred land use map. The property we're looking at tonight is in this pinkish area right here, and again, adopted in 2006 as a response to the need for some of those sub-area plans to try to encourage redevelopment of some of our underutilized areas. This particular document designates the property as a potential for a transit-oriented mixed-use urban village with general commercial and auto-oriented uses along Ward Road. And you can see sort of a grid layout pattern that addresses circulation in the area with the use of internal streets with a north, south, and east-west orientation forming a grid. This is an excerpt from the Envision Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan, the structure plan, and again, you can see the site up here in purple. It is designating it as a mixed-use employment center with proximity to the city's TOD site. And some of the attributes identified in this particular designation include a mix of uses centered around the commuter rail station, primary employment should be a major component, also uses would include commercial, retail, and multifamily in a pedestrian-friendly setting, and so on. Typically, this last slide that I'm showing, anytime we talk about our Northwest area in the City of Wheat Ridge, the subject of the commuter station comes up, and this is a site plan showing the proposed layout on the 2010 aerial photo. Again, we've got 52nd Avenue up at the north, Ward Road over on the western side, and then of course, 50th Place as it comes into the property. So the piece we're looking at tonight is generally in this area here, and you can see that's sort of adjacent to and catty corner from the commuter light rail station, excuse me, it's not light rail, the commuter station end-of-line, which was part of the Fast Trax Initiative that was the voter-approved program to expand rail and bus service. Again, you can see the location and the proximity to the parcel we're talking about tonight. Improvements associated with the end-of-line station will include a train platform, station with amenities and parking, parking and bus drop-off, and then of course, parking. And I would note that the Gold Line is scheduled to be in operation by mid-2016, so really not that far off. We had a neighborhood meeting on January 21st with a few folks from the neighborhood showing up. Again, the discussion was a lot centered around traffic, the existing structures, then of course, the relationship to the Gold Line end-of-line station. Planning Commission did review this request at a public hearing held on May 3rd and gave a recommendation of approval with no conditions attached. And finally, staff is concluding that we believe the property is currently underutilized, and there will be benefits to the city if it's developed, particularly economic benefits, that there are changed conditions due to the proposed construction of the end-of-line station, that there is consistency with the city's guiding documents, which includes the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, Northwest Sub-Area Plan, and then also Envision Wheat Ridge. It's consistent with area zoning and land use. All agencies can serve the property with particular attention paid to traffic and drainage at the time of concept and specific plan stages. And with that, I am concluding my comments. I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Does the applicant have anything to say tonight? Please step forward and display your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address. Then we'll come back around for questions. Meredith, thank you.
For the record, Brian Mott, last name is spelled M-O-T-T, and the address is 1101 West 48th Avenue in Denver. As usual, Meredith does a nice job of outlining these discussions, and so really, I'll underscore really only one point, and that is you all and your predecessors caught this vision a lot of years ago. And this sort of feels to me like, not the culminating step, but we're closer to the end today than we are the beginning, for sure. And so we're just pleased to really be requesting something that we think is consistent with the work that you all have been doing for many years. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you. We'll come back around. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number three from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Ms. Jay?
Just for my information, on page three of the council action form, the bottom of guiding documents, there's a paragraph here, "The application has been through a standard city and outside agency referral process. Upgrades will be required at the expense of the developer upon future redevelopment of the property." And I noticed that was also stated in the Planning Commission documents. As I said, just for my information, what upgrades would those be? And is that good? You got Meredith?
Sure. I've got with me tonight Ken Johnstone, of course, the Director of Community Development, if he needs to chime in. But at the time of, since we don't really have any plans to look at tonight, we're going to rely on both the concept plan and the site development plan to start really fine-tuning the development. At that time, we'll do a full referral and also require the inclusion of probably, in my mind, a traffic impact analysis and a drainage report grading plan, so we can start to look at actually what this is going to involve. So I would suspect there will be street improvements, both to some of the streets that are currently surrounding the property, so 50th Place, Ward, and 52nd, but then also start looking at those internal circulation patterns. And likewise with the drainage, we'll start looking at preliminary drainage reports at that point to try to address a detention in those kinds of issues, as well as utility service.
And these would not be at the expense of the city?
These would not be at the expense of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starker?
I had a question for Mr. Mott, and I was just sort of curious, what kinds of users do you see moving into this property? Is this retail, industrial, office? How do you sort of see the development coming together?
Well, as I recall the code and the zoning ordinance, you know, mixed-use not including industrial is kind of what I would envision. Primarily, you know, multifamily residential is one of the things that the market is really demanding today. And I think some, you know, some convenience retail associated with the light rail station, probably some office space as well. But we, I mean, we have lots of ideas in the drawer, so to speak, but really haven't landed on anything definitively, other than I can tell you that the multifamily piece of it is probably the highest demand component today. That can change, but that's the way the market looks today.
Any other questions before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number 07-2012, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 5060 Ward Road from Planned Industrial Development and Light Industrial to Mixed Use Commercial Transit-Oriented Development Zone District on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the property is currently underutilized. Two, construction of the Gold Line commuter rail station will dramatically change the development potential of this property. Three, the rezoning request is consistent with the Northwest Sub-Area Plan, the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, and Envision Wheat Ridge. And four, the evaluation criteria support approval of this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three, was seconded by Councilmember Demont. Mr. Starker had a correction, Mr. Dahl, I think, on the ordinance?
Yes, in Section 4 of the ordinance, there's a, that's the severability clause, and Mr. Starker has read his packet very carefully and found that instead of the word "adjudged", we have the word "adjusted," and before modifying court of competent jurisdiction, courts judge things, not adjust things. So we will make that change to this ordinance and the one that's next upcoming on the agenda.
Does the motion maker and the second agree with the change? Okay. We have a motion to approve, was seconded by Councilmember Demont. Discussion on the main motion, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. We'll move on to item four, which is Council Bill number 8-2012. I'm going to open the public hearing, Councilmember Jay.
Council Bill number 08-2012, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4695 Wadsworth Boulevard from Residential 2R2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood Zone District, case number WZ12-03, Patrick Nichols and Associates. At issue in September of 2010, City Council adopted new mixed-use zone districts which are intended to create a streamlined development review process, allowing higher-density mixed-use development and with a range of land uses, including residential. This applicant requests approval of a zone change from Residential 2R2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood, which is MUN, for property located at 4695 Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change is the first step of the process for approval of reuse of this site with mixed-use zoning. If approved and prior to construction of any new structures, a site development will be required, meeting the standards in the mixed-use zone.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This is ordinance number 1514.
Thank you. If you're here to speak on item number four, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. Move on to staff report.
Again, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, case number WZ12-03, is a request for approval of a zone change from R2 to Mixed Use Neighborhood on property at 4695 Wadsworth Boulevard. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file, and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear this case this evening. Okay, we're moving to Wadsworth from northwest part of the city. This is an aerial photo which has the property in question outlined in blue. Wadsworth runs up the eastern side of the property, and 47th Avenue is on the northern portion. The property is zoned R2, which allows primarily single and two-family residential dwellings. The subject is a little bit over 12,000 square feet in size and has on it a two-story residence which was built in 1947. Access to the property is via an unimproved driveway from 47th Avenue, and the remainder of the lot consists primarily of some landscaping turf with a few mature trees and so on. I would note that the existing home is in a state of disrepair and has had a history of noncompliance in relationship to building and nuisance code over the years. This is a copy of the zoning map, again, overlaid onto the city's aerial photos, so you can, again, it looks sort of like a patchwork quilt. The property is outlined in blue, and Wadsworth, again, which runs along its eastern perimeter, is one of the, is a major regional commercial corridor that carries between 45,000 and 50,000 cars per day. The surrounding properties, again, include a variety of land uses and zoning designations that you can see from sort of the patchwork quilt of colors on the screen. To the north and west, our property is zoned R2 that include primarily single-family dwellings. To the south is a parcel zoned R3, again, another residence. Further to the south, our parcel zoned restricted commercial, neighborhood commercial, with those uses being the Arapaho House facility and office building. And then across Wadsworth to the west, our residential and commercial properties zoned R2 and RC. So along that Wadsworth corridor, sort of a hodgepodge of land uses and zoning. The applicants in this case currently own and operate the business Mod Mood and Retro Consignment located at 7,700 West 44th Avenue. They specialize in mid-century modern design furnishing and decor, and the intent of this application is for them to expand their design services over onto the subject property and rehab that existing facility into a commercial, a commercial building. Again, the architecture of the existing home sort of fits in with their whole genre of design, the mid-century modern trend that's so popular right now. So let's take some look at the pictures of the site. This is taken from 47th Avenue. The property has the house sighted kind of skewed on the property. You can see this big sort of area down here, which is, if this is rezoned, where the parking will go for the commercial business. This is looking south along Wadsworth. There's no sidewalk there, but you can see that people have created a pedestrian path, sort of a cow path. Again, to the north, again, there's no public sidewalk, but people have turned dirt into one. And then this is taken looking at the eastern facade of the building. I'm standing on the western, or excuse me, the eastern side of Wadsworth, looking towards that facade of the structure. We've already talked about mixed-use zoning tonight. This is for a different type of category, it's Mixed Use Neighborhood, MUN, and it is specified to be appropriate along neighborhood streets and neighborhood commercial centers and intended to encourage medium-density mixed-use with a limited range of uses. It again also allows a variety of uses, including neighborhood retail service and residential. And one thing that's a little bit different about this particular mixed-use zoning category is the height restrictions are quite a lot lower than some of the other mixed-use MUC and MUC TOD. In this situation, residential buildings are limited to 35 feet in height, and the commercial buildings have a 50-foot height limitation. That's quite a bit lower than some of the other mixed-use zone districts. The process for the MUC site redevelopment includes the zone change application, where no plans are required. That's what we're considering tonight. And if that's approved, then we move on to the site plan for the specific development. It is an administrative approval, but we start flushing out things with the drainage and the traffic and so on. There could be the need for a subdivision plat, and then of course, a building permit before they can come out of the ground with any new construction. Again, we're going to take a look at some of our guiding documents. This is the Sub-Area Plan, Future Land Use Map for the Wadsworth Corridor Sub-Area Plan. This was a document that was adopted in 2007, addendum to the city's comprehensive plan. The property, which is designated by this little red area here, is shown as a commercial on the recommended land use map. Other identified goals include creating attractive, welcoming front door to the city, to encourage a gradual increase in density foster to Wadsworth, to facilitate future expansion, and so forth, also to improve the streetscape appearance and pedestrian connection. Again, we're looking at the structure map from Envision Wheat Ridge, which is the city's comprehensive plan. There's kind of a lot going on sort of right here where the property is located, as designated by that blue arrow. It's shown as being in a neighborhood buffer area, which if you look closely, there's sort of a little brown in there, on the edge of the commercial corridor, which are the red ovals. And the intent of the neighborhood buffer designation is for buffering and transition between low-density residential areas and the higher-intensity commercial corridors, certainly which Wadsworth would qualify as. And another identified goal within this designation is to encourage investment and redevelopment of properties. Again, Wadsworth was looked at very carefully as being, having the potential for redevelopment... Again, Wadsworth was looked at very carefully as being, having the potential for redevelopment area, and it's designated that in, in the comprehensive plan. Other goals include to attract quality retail development and actively retain existing retailers, revitalization of key redevelopment areas, and so on and so forth. There was a neighborhood meeting held in November. We did have a handful of folks show up from the neighborhood. Most of the traffic, or, excuse me, most of the discussion was centered about traffic, parking, sort of the nature of what the business was being proposed, and potential improvements to the site. Planning Commission did review this at a public hearing held on May seventeenth, and they did give a recommendation of approval without any conditions. And included in your packet were five letters commenting on the zone change application in your packet. Finally, staff concludes that the property is currently underutilized and unmaintained, and that there will be benefits to the city if it is rezoned and redeveloped. There will be economic development benefits as a result of the zone change. There will be physical benefits because the property is currently somewhat of an ice sore and it will be improved and become more effective again. Also, there will be pedestrian benefits based on a sidewalk being installed along Wadsworth. There are changing conditions due to the intensification of traffic on Wadsworth, and the property is no longer desirable for low-density residential use, fifty thousand cars driving by it in proximity every day. There is consistency with the guiding documents, more specifically Wadsworth corridor sub-area plan and also envisioned Wheat Ridge. And the proposed M U N zoning will provide a land use transition as it's intended to when it was created between Wadsworth and the low-density neighborhood to the west. All agencies can serve the property, and Public Works will be, again, assessing traffic and drainage at the time of the site plan approval stage, and staff is recommending approval with no conditions. So that concludes staff comments, and again, I would be delighted to answer questions.
Thank you. Move on to the applicant. Would the applicant like to say anything in addition to comments from staff tonight? If you do, please step forward and display your last name for the record. It's totally up to you.
My name is Jeannie Nichols, N I C H O L S, and we live at thirty-eight sixty-three Allison Circle in Wheat Ridge. And the only comments that we would like to make is that we love the city of Wheat Ridge and have found it to be a very accommodating city for our vision, for the future, and with your planned vision of growth, we feel like we're, we have a great partnership. Mod Mood has been very well accepted for the city, and I think we've brought a lot of positive traffic and attention to the city through that. Today, I had a phone call from someone who was, had been working Broadway looking for furnishings, and I said, "You've got to come up to Forty-fourth Avenue in Wheat Ridge. We've got a lot going on, and it's an easy shot, just come down Thirty-eighth Avenue and turn north on Wadsworth." And she was quite surprised to find that it was so close and so convenient. So just a little comment about the house. My husband and I are absolutely insane taking on this project, but the house spoke to us, and we have a horror that the house might be demolished at some point in time because it is in complete disrepair. We feel like it speaks of the Wheat Ridge community and who we are, and that is our goal. And by expanding our business with the design studio, we feel that it offers kind of an upgrade in services for the city to offer design services. We've partnered with Hunter Douglas to carry a top-end line of draperies and those types of things if this is to happen. So we're very sensitive to the neighborhoods and the community, and I think with the development of our current building, Mod Mood and Retro Consignment, we had the opportunity to destroy the greenhouses, and in our craziness once again, we decided to hold on to that part of the heritage that we feel is a part of Wheat Ridge. And so I just wanted to assure you that that is our goal. Of course, unforeseen circumstances might change any of that, but we just want to help our city that we live in become stronger and more prestigious and a point of destination for the Denver metro area.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Gooch, G O O C H, and I as well live at thirty-eight sixty-three Allison Circle in Wheat Ridge. And I just wanted to add the comment that the property that you are getting ready to hopefully approve is in that terrible state of disrepair, and it's unfortunate because it is one of the finest architectural properties built in that era. We've had plenty of people come to us that kind of got wind of what we were trying to do in, in saving that building, and I, I think it kind of surprised me that that many people were aware of that building and have passed it many times, and architecturally, it's a very significant home, being, again, one of the most contemporary homes built in its era. And we feel that it's going to give Wheat Ridge a nice first impression for the people coming southbound off the interstate. We'll do all we can to make you very proud of what that project will ultimately be. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item four tonight? Seeing that, we'll move on to council discussion and questions. Mr. Reinhardt?
I have one for Mr. Dahl. There's some, there's a letter in the package about prior litigation on the site, and I guess I'd like to answer the general question. Are there any circumstance under which there'd be prior litigation limiting what we could do here? And in particular, is there anything in this case that we should be aware of or that bears on the decision we're going to make tonight?
No, I don't believe there is. I mean, it's, while there's been litigation, they have the right to apply for this rezoning. They're the owners of the property. There's not a constraint on their ability to apply for or you to grant the rezoning.
Any other questions or comments before, Mr. Pond?
Just a question for clarification, Meredith. The, in the, in the process, the site plan, the site approval, or site plan approval process on the, on the mixed-use commercial TOD you had mentioned in the previous, in the previous presentation, there was a neighborhood meeting associated with that, and I didn't see that on this one. I just wanted to confirm that that either is or isn't the case.
The, the northwest TOD property that we just looked at over at Ward and Fifty-Second is a little bit different. It's about fifteen acres in size. Anything that gets rezoned to MU and the sort of mixed-use zoning that's over ten acres has to go through a concept plan first, which is more conceptual in nature, and then, and then the site plan. This, this property is only about twelve thousand four hundred square feet in size, so there's just not that much to look at, so we're going to go right to the site plan approval. The site plan approval does not require a neighborhood meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
First of all, thank you for, for rescuing. I think that's a wonderful property, and it's so appropriate. At some point, I'd like to know, you will retain Mod Mood, and you'll keep both businesses? Yeah. Right, you could have three businesses, fill all the stuff you got in there. Maybe more important, but I did contact Tim Pirano, and Ken replied, because I was concerned about the proximity of the building to Wadsworth and, and future plans. So I wanted to make sure that you are aware, and, and I received more information as far as the Wadsworth corridor and future plans as to whether there will be space available should that happen. Ken, I think.
Yes, Ms. Jay, thanks for the question. The, as is kind of standard protocol, as, as this goes through the site plan review process and, and the public works review process, two things. Number one, knowing that the long-range plan for Wadsworth is to make improvements to that, what exactly those improvements look like is not exactly known yet. We have to go through the federal environmental approval processes and do that with CDOTs since it is a state highway. But we're planning right now, conceptually, for a hundred and fifty feet of right-of-way from, so seventy-five feet from center line. There would be, what we would request at this juncture through a subdivision plat process would be a reservation of that, so they wouldn't actually dedicate it to the city or to the state, because the state would need to presumably acquire that in the future at such time that funding is available to widen the road in some manner. We don't know when that would be. So that's approximately a thirty-five-foot reservation that we'd be requesting, which gets quite a ways into the property, as I understand it, probably fairly close to the existing structure, but can be accommodated, as I understand it. In the interim, what we're talking about with them thus far would be some inner improvements to formalize that social trail that Meredith pointed out, and, and make that actually a six-foot trelan and a six-foot sidewalk is what we want to fit in there in the short term as part of their redevelopment of the property.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Oh, it's my thing. Sorry. I was reflecting on the answer. I move to approve Council Bill number zero eight dash two thousand and twelve, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-six ninety-five Wadsworth Boulevard from residential two R two to mixed-use neighborhood M U N zone district on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after the final publication for the following reasons. The property is not desirable for low-density residential use due to, that's a tough word, meaning it's close to Wadsworth Boulevard. It's.
Adjacent?
Adjacent, it's adjacency. Yeah, everybody has to say that. The proposed zone change and reuse of the existing structure will provide a land use transition between Wadsworth and the neighborhood to the west. Number three, the evaluation criteria support approval of this request, and this property is currently underutilized.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four, was seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the main motion. Mr. Stites?
I just wanted to say real fast, if this thing passes tonight, one, I'd like to thank you for staying in Wheat Ridge, and two, I'd like to thank you for helping to clean up one of our entrances and, and main corridors to the city.
I also wanted to comment on the fact that even though Wadsworth has been discussed and possibly widened in the future, it's a long ways away before that kind of money is spent on Wadsworth Boulevard, and acquiring the right-of-way is going to be very expensive. So while there's a hundred and fifty feet of right-of-way that was discussed by Mr. Johnstone, the chances of that really are going to be dependent on funding, and the state doesn't have that kind of money, the city doesn't have that kind of money. So I would hope that when staff's working with you that you're a little, a little more lenient on that, because it could be fifty, thirty, forty more years before anything happens on Wadsworth, so.
Any more discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yahoo.
So item five is Council Bill number ten dash two thousand and twelve. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Council Bill number ten, twenty-twelve, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six concerning the planned development district regulations and private zone changes and making certain amendments to chapter two and association here within case number Z O A twelve oh one. The most recent amendment to the planned development code was approved five years ago in May of two thousand and seven, at which time the city adopted a two-step approval process and additional administrative approvals. The attached ordinance represents an extension of that in two thousand and seven effort for the purpose of refining the two-step process and addressing these central goals. Separate the zone change procedure, ordinance, and criteria from the approval of specific site design for planned developments. Establish a more logical and predictable procedure for planned development approval and allowing a developer to process, proceed with more assurance in the entitlement process and improve clarity, consistency, and organization within the zoning code. The proposed ordinance repeals reenacted Article Three, Planned Development District Regulations and Section twenty-six, one-twelve, private rezoning.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number.
This is ordinance number fifteen fifteen.
Thank you. Move on to staff presentation with one PowerPoint slide.
It's, I think about four, but it's pretty short.
I'm just kidding.
I have a personal best coming up on a later case, though. It's two, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director. We are here to discuss Z O A twelve oh one. This has been before you in the past at a study session earlier this year. We are pleased to be moving this forward. It does pertain to Article Three of Chapter twenty-six, which is the section regulating planned developments, those zoning districts within the city, and then also amending the sections pertaining to private zone changes to align those two sections and some of the criteria for considering rezoning applications. Just a brief, a very brief description of kind of the role of, of planned development districts in the city. We do have planned development districts that pertain to industrial, residential, commercial, and mixed-use districts, and those can be blended together to blend those land uses as well. Essentially, it's an alternative to what we typically call straight zoning districts, so the commercial one, the R one, that all have their own kind of set of development standards and permitted uses spelled out in, in Article Two of the code. And, and the intent of really a planned district is that it's tailored to a specific property, to a specific set of land uses, something that's fairly unique and can't be, for design issues or for, for use issues, can't be well accommodated with a, with a straight zoning district. So that's really the intent of the planned districts. Historically, the city has really relied quite heavily on those. We have a lot of planned districts throughout the city, notably a lot of planned industrial districts, some planned residential and planned commercial districts as well. I think the city and many cities around the region and the country are trying to rely a little bit less on, on planned development districts, or it goes by other names, sometimes planned unit developments. They can be a fairly burdensome tool, just in terms of each and every property is potentially, has to go through this kind of negotiated zoning, and the value added from that process is not necessarily terribly significant. So what we as a city and what council did when you adopted the new mixed-use districts a couple of years ago now was really just kind of try and set the ground rules through a good set of permitted uses, flexible document, and really a good set of urban design principles and guidelines that are embedded in those districts. So as, as we're seeing tonight with the hearings that we're having and the hearings that we've had in the past in terms of adopting those mixed-use districts actually on the ground in a variety of locations across the city, we, we see less and less of the use for planned developments. But that said, it's still an important tool. I mean, we can't get everything right in a mixed-use district. We don't want to take that tool away from someone who has something that's very creative, unique, that just doesn't fit well with the zoning districts that we have to offer them. So that said, we, we think the tool can be improved so that if there is a developer or property owner who feels that that's the type of zoning district that they need to use, we want that process to be streamlined and predictable and a fair process for all involved, including the public and city council, and make sure you have an appropriate level of review in looking at potential planned districts in the future. A little bit more background and specifics as to why we're amending our planned development district regulations. Back in two thousand and seven is when we most recently amended this section of the code, and really the intent of that was to provide more flexibility. What we did at that time to change the previous paradigm was to allow for this concept plan approval, which is, was basically saying to a developer or property owner, you can come in with a fairly conceptual-level zoning document, get that approved, and, and have some level of approval that you can maybe market for development if you're trying to sell the property, but not having to go through what you previously had to do, which was really go through the full level of design documents at a, at a great expense and a, and a great deal of risk in terms of spending quite a bit of money at that initial outset without any certainty that city council and planning commission would support that, that application. So we think that, that intent still remains. intent still remains. Our concern has been that the concept plan as it's currently structured is really a fairly minimal level of approval in terms of a land use entitlement. And why that is, is because it's a two-step process, which is fine. There's a subsequent, specific development plan approval. The challenge in our minds has been that that subsequent approval is considered in the same exact way as the first approval was. Still go through a public hearing process, still subject to legal protest, still a very discretionary approval for whether the city council chooses to approve that, and of course, if there is a written protest, it's subject to the supermajority vote as an ordinance by city council. We think it makes more sense to have two discrete processes, that initial process being a concept development plan that's considered as an ordinance, that's subject to the charter provisions for written objections if the neighbors have concerns, and then subsequent to that, have a specific development plan. The specific development as we've crafted the ordinance still requires a public hearing. It's a public hearing before the planning commission, which we think is a more, again, a more predictable development approval process for the private sector. I think these charts really are the best way to look at the current framework and the proposed framework. You'll see at the top, this is the process, and there's a slide after this that shows the submittal requirements. The current process, we have an outline, we have a specific. You can see in both of those processes, there's the PC Planning Commission hearing, there's the city council hearing, there's the legal protest opportunity, and of course, neighborhood meetings in both of those. In addition, after that process is completed under the current regulatory framework, we do what's called a final development plan in planned developments. That gets recorded as well. It's an administrative review, and then you pull permits, right-of-way permits, building permits. In the proposed process, we're really cutting out one step, and you'll see the circles indicating that we're eliminating some steps within those three steps. So an outline development plan goes before city council as an ordinance, recommendation from planning commission, neighborhood meeting, opportunity for legal protest, that document gets recorded. And then subsequent to that, if the applicant chooses, they actually still have the option of doing those two processes together if they so wish. But subsequent to that, in a typical process, they'd go through a specific development plan. That doesn't have the neighborhood meeting, it does have a PC hearing, and it would have a city council hearing only in the event that the planning commission denied the application, or the applicant or property owner wanted to appeal some of the conditions that the planning commission placed on the application. So in, if it's a well-received application, it would end at a planning commission hearing. So a very streamlined process. We've also, at a staff level, looked at kind of, again, the value added from a final development plan, and we're comfortable that we get a sufficient amount of detail at that specific development plan, and then subsequently through the building permit process, that those are sufficient tools to make sure that the planning issues are getting addressed, the engineering issues are getting addressed, without adding kind of that, what we felt was kind of a duplicative process of a final development plan. So that's what we're proposing in this ordinance, is that you go straight from specific development plan to administrative review. And then lastly, just to, and we don't have to look at this in detail, again, I think the point of it is that we're trying to get the right amount of information at the right step in the process, no more, no less. So again, you can see that the final development plan has been removed. At the specific development plan, we will be getting an appropriate level of engineering information, so, as well as architectural information and site planning information. Going back one step, at the outline development plan, which is where council would be involved, you're looking at the character of development, the permitted uses, a concept plan, looking at circulation and access, and preliminary engineering concepts. The planning commission then will look at the specific development plan, so there'll still be a public process to look at some of that more detailed information, and then finally, all those components will be finalized through the building permit or right-of-way permit process at an administrative level. So this potentially cuts out several months from an entitlement process for a property owner, for an applicant, and still ensures the public interest is being met in terms of our design objectives, engineering requirements, et cetera. Just logistically, what sections of the code are being modified? Again, principally, it's a repeal and reenact of Article 3, which is the planned development section of Chapter 26 of the zoning code. I want to thank Lauren Michelak, who's in the audience, who was really the drafter of a lot of the details of this and did an excellent job in terms of reorganizing the document as well, so it's much clearer to use, just in terms of the internal structure of the ordinance, the review criteria, which you use in terms of analyzing a proposal for rezoning. And then we're amending the private rezoning requirements as well. That's in large part just to align those review criteria, to make sure that the review criteria that we state in the planned development zoning districts are consistent with the review criteria that we have in the private rezoning application process as well. And then lastly, some changes to Section 2, which really is just administrative matter, to make sure that the scope of what the planning commission has in terms of their review authority is aligning with these proposed changes. And that's all I have.
Ken, this was discussed at a study session back in January, February?
That's correct.
And agreed upon. Good job. Thanks. Questions or comments from council? I'm sorry. Before we move on, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on item number five? Seeing that, now we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Mr. Reinhardt?
I guess it's just a comment. You know, I think that this is a big step for us. You know, I have the fortune or misfortune of using these kind of planned unit development type of projects in other jurisdictions, and every one of those boxes that he eliminated that was redundant, I think, is a step in the right direction towards what we're trying to accomplish here. And so I would like to applaud the work that was done to eliminate boxes that have to be checked, redundant boxes, I should say, that have to be checked, that don't add content review, that get removed through this process. So thank you.
Hey, Mr. Steitz?
Just real fast, I would hope with this that it's going to streamline the process, take a lot less time, a lot less money, and we might be able to get stuff done quicker in town. Thanks.
I want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 10, 2012, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the planned development district regulations and private zone changes, and making certain amendments to Chapter 2 in association here within on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number five. It was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Didn't you mean to abstain? You didn't mean to abstain?
It's the computer, the monitor.
The light was in your eyes.
The monitor pushed the button?
Yes.
Okay. Item six is Council Bill Number 12-2012. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 12-2012, an ordinance disconnecting land located in Section 15 Township 3 South, Range 69 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, from the City of Wheat Ridge municipal boundary. Case number ANX 12-01, Tomlinson Park. In 2004, the cities of Wheat Ridge and Arvada entered into an intergovernmental agreement for the purpose of cooperative planning and revenue sharing in regard to the Arvada Ridge project in Arvada at West 50th Avenue and Kipling. The IGA outlines required improvements to streets in the area and the Columbine Basin storm drainage system. The IGA established reciprocal plan, review obligations, and project reimbursement to the City of Wheat Ridge. In addition, the IGA implemented a revenue-sharing schedule, committing the City of Arvada to remit to Wheat Ridge an annual payment of $100,000 for a period of 18 consecutive years to mitigate impacts to the City of Wheat Ridge Public Works and Police Department. There have been infrastructure improvements in the vicinity consistent with the IGA, including the realignment of Miller Street, relocation of the I-70 front roads, connection to Kipling Street by the construction of 50th Avenue, and improvements to Kipling Street. There have also been improvements constructed which implement a portion of the Columbine Drainage Basin and accommodate drainage from the Arvada Ridge project. One of the conditions required by the City of Wheat Ridge regarding maintenance of these drainage facilities included disconnection of a portion of the channel adjacent to Tomlinson Park at 50th and Garrison with subsequent annexation by the City of Arvada. The park is already owned and maintained by the City of Arvada. Adoption of the attached council bill on first reading sets the public hearing to consider the disconnection of this property for August 13, 2012. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2012, an ordinance disconnecting land located in Section 15 Township 3 South, Range 69 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, from the City of Wheat Ridge municipal boundary on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, August 13, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers, and that it take effect upon recordation of the disconnection plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number six for first reading. It was seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Discussion on item six. Mr. Starker?
This is kind of new to me. It looks like under the terms of the deal that we had with the City of Arvada, we were going to generate about $1,008,000 in revenue. Have we, on the, we've been at it for about eight or 10 years. Do we get that payment, and are we looking for another $1,000,000 after we disconnect?
Yeah, we get that payment annually, $100,000 annually, and I think we were owning, this is maybe the sixth or seventh year.
I thought it was like eight, eight years, but, well, it started in '04, and it's 12, so that's eight years, so.
Yeah, so we've been receiving the payment annually, and we'll continue to receive it until the 18 years are up.
Okay. Whether we, and disconnection means that we move the boundary, the city boundary?
Correct. Yep. The funding, revenue sharing, if you will, was mainly for the impact on the city roads, and then also our police activity in that area. So had nothing to do with the drainage in the area.
And who owns the real estate?
The City of Arvada owns the park that's going to be disconnected.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion for approval. Second it, please poll the council.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item seven is resolution number 36-2012. Councilmember J?
Resolution number 36, 2012, a resolution beginning a city-initiated rezoning of property located at 7750 Three Acre Lane to mixed-use commercial MUC. In 2011, city council approved a legislative rezoning of the Wadsworth corridor to mixed-use commercial MUC. It has come to staff's attention that a parcel just west of Wadsworth at 7750 Three Acre Lane was inadvertently excluded from the zone change process. Staff has met with the property owner to explain the error, and the owner has requested that the parcel be rezoned from Residential 3, R3, to MUC as was originally intended. Approval of the enclosed resolution will formally begin a city-initiated rezoning of the subject parcel.
Sorry about that, Ken. I thought we were done with the screen, so.
This is the proposed first step in the process for a rezoning, I'm sorry. For property at 7750 Three Acre Lane, case number WZ 1205. Essentially, what we're doing here is trying to go back in time to when we really extended an offer to the property owners on the Wadsworth corridor to take one step out of the process for them if they were interested in terms of initiating the rezoning from a variety of different zone districts to the mixed-use commercial designation. We only had a couple property owners, I think it was two, who chose not to be a part of that rezoning when we did that about two years ago. This property, and I'll just move on to the one graphic, which is intended to show what that air was. So starting on the left, you can see the property in question. This is a graphic from the 2001 Wadsworth Urban Renewal Plan, and you can see that the property was clearly in that plan. One of the criteria that we used in terms of the recommended rezoning of property to the mixed-use commercial city-initiated was that it be within that urban renewal plan area. We, you know, the nexus between that being, you know, these are areas that we want to develop. We think mixed-use commercial is the tool that will facilitate that redevelopment, so that was one of our starting points for how we developed that map. If you look at the center aerial and graphic, you can see this is, the tan area is the, in our GIS data, is what is depicted as that urban renewal plan area. So I'm pretty sure this is the only, the air that we've identified, but this parcel was just inadvertently not included in that graphic. So when we developed the ordinance and associated map to rezone the property to mixed-use commercial, we used the digital data from our GIS, which is usually highly accurate, but in this case, it wasn't. So the current zoning map on the far right, you can see that property remains zone R3, when the, most of the surrounding properties, particularly those adjacent to Wadsworth, have been rezoned to that mixed-use commercial. As was stated in the summary, the property owner contacted us just as a matter of, you know, kind of knocking on the door and seeing what they could do with their property, and that's when we discovered the air, when we looked at the zoning map and saw that it was still R3. So we tracked down this history, figured out what happened, and basically put it back to them to say, you know, are you interested? We think the intent of council was to offer this up as an option. We did speak with you about this a couple months back at a study session to make sure that you supported the initiation of this process. So that's where we're at. We're proposing to initiate the process with the adoption of the resolution and the map to change this to mixed-use commercial.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number seven? Seeing that, we'll move on to council questions or discussion before, actually, we need them. Do I make the motion?
I move to approve resolution number 36-2012, a resolution beginning a city-initiated rezoning of property located at 7750 Three Acre Lane to mixed-use commercial MUC.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item seven. It was seconded by Mr. Steitz. Discussion by council on item seven? Please poll the council.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Item eight is resolution number 35-2012. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight is resolution number 35-2012, a resolution beginning a city-initiated comprehensive rezoning of properties located on West 38th Avenue, approximately between Sheridan and Wadsworth to mixed-use neighborhood. At issue in this matter, the city's adopted plans, including envisioned Wheat Ridge and the 38th Avenue corridor plan, called for the redevelopment of 38th Avenue with mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development. The current zoning on 38th Avenue contains outdated development standards and makes compact mixed-use development difficult to achieve. The mixed-use neighborhood, MUN Zone District, adopted by city council in 2010, was designed to promote quality mixed-use development on corridors like 38th Avenue. The resolution would start the process of a city-initiated comprehensive rezoning of properties along 38th Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number 35-2012, a resolution beginning a city-initiated comprehensive rezoning of properties located on West 38th Avenue, approximately between Sheridan and Wadsworth to mixed-use neighborhood.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number eight. It was seconded by Mr. Steitz. Sir? Do you have any staff report?
Just a station. This map, is this on?
You might be too close, because it's, the mic's been acting up.
This map shows the proposed area that would be rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood as part of this action. of this action. The boundaries, and just a moment, I'll go over the criteria that we use to draw these boundaries. Generally, it's for properties on 38th Avenue between Wadsworth and Sheridan, but there is a little more nuance, which I'll get into in a minute. We also, some of the places where you see basically a hole in the map, such as here, would reflect properties that the property owner requested not to be included in the This map shows the proposed zoning area that exists. The vast majority of properties being rezoned are currently zoned C1 or commercial 1. There's also a fair amount of restricted commercial or RC zoning, and some neighborhood commercial, as well as R3 or residential 3 zoning. Those are the primary zone districts that are in the area today. And as I mentioned, I'm going to just quickly go through the criteria that we use to initially draw the potential area for rezoning, that we then notified everybody within that area of the city's intent and asked for their feedback this spring. That area was definitely included, any property that has frontage on 38th Avenue. It also included properties that might not front directly on 38th Avenue but are within the 38th Avenue urban renewal area. There's also some properties that do not front 38th Avenue but have commercial zoning and touch a property that does front 38th Avenue. Another criteria was to not create split zoning for any properties. And the final was to include some commercially zoned properties that are adjacent to the rezoning area. And the main reason for the inclusion of those properties was that residential property with a commercial district, they're currently non-conforming, and MUN allows for...
I think we need a new battery in the mic. See, Sarah, you burned out the mic. This is so important, so riveting.
Please on there.
Would you mind just repeating the last couple of sentences because you lost those for the public?
Sure, no problem. One, another criteria was to not create split zoning for any property as we were drawing the proposed boundary. And finally, we included a couple of properties that are single-family residential with a commercial zoning, which means they're currently legally non-conforming. But if they were rezoned to MUN, they'd become conforming, which we saw as a great advantage. So, those were the criteria that we used to draw the initial boundary, which was fairly similar to the one that you see before you tonight. However, as council is aware, because we had a couple study sessions on this matter, we, after we drew the initial boundary based on this criteria, we did mailing to all property owners within that area. We did two mailings. One was to invite them to a meeting to learn more about the zoning and why the city was contemplating a city-initiated rezoning. And then a second mailing was done with a feedback form asking for responses of either they want their property rezoned, they don't, or they're undecided. And we brought the responses to city council in June. There were a few property owners that said no, a few who had said undecided, and staff tried to do outreach to each of those property owners. There were a couple who said no that, after speaking with staff and spending some time looking at the information we gave them, did decide to switch. And there were, however, four property owners that basically did not respond to any of our attempts to get in touch with them, and they had initially responded no, so they are not included in the rezoning area. And there is one current owner that said they were undecided that has not responded to staff's inquiries as of this time. We're kind of trying to step that up. It's a property that actually is close to one of the council members' properties, and we're going to try as much as we can to outreach. We've done mailings and phone calls and haven't heard back. But we decided for now to keep the property in the rezoning area because it's much easier to get out than it is to get in. Once the boundary is drawn and we start the public noticing, we have to do all of that based on a 600-foot radius from the boundary. So, if we added a property in later, we'd basically have to start over again with all the noticing. And because city council made it really clear when we met in June at a study session that you want to do a 30-day essentially opt-out provision where property owners can request to be removed within 30 days of the adoption of the ordinance, which we anticipate to be this fall, we still have a couple months at least ahead of us to try and get a hold of this property owner. And if they do want to be removed, they could definitely be removed. So, we wanted to err on the side of keeping them in. Part of that, all the more reason why we thought they might want to be included is they did indicate in their initial response when they said they were very confused that they're planning on selling the property in the future, and we really do believe the zoning could add value to the property. It's also a mixed-use building. It has commercial at the ground floor and residential above, so this zoning seems to be a great fit for it. So, we'd really like to try and continue to keep it in and hopefully be able to talk with the property owner. But obviously, if they decide they don't want the zoning, we will take them out. In terms of next steps, after the resolution is adopted tonight, there's still several steps that would happen in which the map could be amended further. First, we'll have a neighborhood meeting, which we've already scheduled for August 8, and that would include anybody within the rezoning area as well as any property owner within 600 feet. So, that will be quite a mailing list, and it will include notification, again, to all property owners. There will also then be a planning commission public hearing, and then, of course, a final public hearing before city council. And then, as I already mentioned, per direction in a study session with city council, there will be a 30-day period after adoption of the ordinance for property owners to have one last chance to request removal. So, there's still several opportunities here for public requests and potential changes to the map if city council decides to make those. And that's all I have. I'm just happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Did we have anybody here to speak tonight on item number eight? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion on item eight. We have a motion for approval. Any questions or comments, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, Sarah, I talked to that property owner late this evening, and hopefully we should, you should hear from her tomorrow on her response. And then, two, just to make sure, on 38th down there, I can't remember, but I think it was from the center of 38th, and then, like in our neighborhood down there, 175 feet from that was all commercial, so that will take in the property behind any adjacent property, correct?
You're asking if all the commercially zoned properties, in most cases, yes. We've, even if the property doesn't directly front on 38th, if it's adjacent to one that does and has commercial zoning, it is included.
Because there were spots down there over the years, and I think if I remember right, it was from the center of 38th to 175 feet was all commercial, which took in, you know, extra property, but...
Sure. I haven't actually measured what that distance is, so I can't confirm the 175 feet, but it, it does include the commercial zoning back up to where you hit the residential.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval? It was seconded. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item nine is Resolution 38-2012. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 38-2012, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge and the city of Lakewood concerning academy training for police officer recruits. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Police Department has periodic need to send police officer recruits to training academies. The city does not have the resources to operate a training academy of its own. The resolution approves an agreement under which the police department may send its police officer recruits to a regional training academy operated by the city of Lakewood and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 38-2012, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge and the city of Lakewood concerning academy training for police officer recruits.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval. It was seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that our community development department has a new over-the-counter plan review program, which has started in the last couple weeks. So, any Thursday or Friday between hours of 8:00 and 11:30 a.m., you may, the building division will be accepting and processing walk-in building permit applications for several types of projects, which include residential decks or sheds, carports, and garages that require plan review. So, if you have a weekend project coming up, you want to get the permit before the weekend, you can come in during those hours. There's more information on the city's website.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerks' matters?
I just wanted to tell the council and the public, I guess, too, that I'm, every day this week, I'm in classes, in clerk classes, in Boulder for certification, and it's a, it's a three-year process, so don't get excited just yet. But also, Mr. Rome, the deputy clerk, is out on extended leave, and the only person in the clerk's office is Janice, so, you know, obviously, she can help you and help people. But I wanted to just tell the public, if you, I mean, obviously, if you have a pressing issue, talk to Janice. But if it's a clerk-y kind of matter that can wait till next week, that would be appreciated if it's not an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Starker?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah, always. Would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, see one of us or staff. Positive thing with the hot weather now with all the rain, there's a bunch of weeds coming up, and we need to take care of it because there's nothing that'll make a city look junkier real fast than, you know, weeds. So, please check with your neighbors if they're elderly, maybe they need help handling it. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Yes. Just want to remind people that this coming Friday, July the 13th, there's going to be a produce and health fair over at Healing Waters Family Center from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. There's no income or residential requirements to participate, and if you can, bring a bag for all the produce I'll be sending you home with.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
Myself on, oh, cancel that. Thursday night seems to be the place to be in Wheat Ridge. My gosh, we always got something going on. This Thursday, it's at, at, at the pizza place, what's it called?
Right Coast.
Right Coast, I started calling it something else. Right Coast Pizza, we have local, living local, as well as joints in the park, it says. There's going to be yoga class there, family yoga. And then the following week, we have the Cruiser Club, Paul. These are both on Thursdays, this Thursday. So, wow, Wheat Ridge is a hotspot in the nation on Thursday night. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
I'm trying really hard not to comment on permits for work done on the weekend, but whether there is or not a requirement for such, but we're going to let that slide. But nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Demont?
I don't have any hats or anything tonight, but I do want to remind everybody the circus tickets are on sale from August 18th to August 25th. Tickets are on sale now at City Hall, the Rec Center, online, and you can buy them at the, at the door at the circus after the Carnation Festival, August 18th to the 25th.
I had an inquiry if tickets are available at the Active Adult Center. Do you know if they are?
No.
They're not there right now.
Rec Center, City Hall, and online. That's it.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff for the work they've done on these changes to the codes for the rezonings. I mean, you know, 17 years ago, every rezoning was, it's just this discombobulated fight. We had property owners coming in, they wanted to rezone their property. You had neighbors angry, property owners angry. Every process was different. And over the last few years, I think we started this when Mr. Reinhardt was on the planning commission, we had a meeting, and said we need something that's more streamlined and really supports the least restrictive environment. So, what we've seen tonight is major rezonings on big pieces of property, on Wadsworth and on, especially the TOD side, with little or no controversy because we have the right process in place, the right zoning criteria, good notification, and really a streamlined process. And then, the PR, or the PCD process that was modified tonight was a great way to also promote that least restrictive environment. So, I'm really glad to see that we're moving forward with those, and then our billing process permits have been streamlined, too. So, with that, we're done.
Thank you.